Start that. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Let's bow our heads for a word of prayer. Gracious God, we come again to be with you in a unique way. We have gathered as a group. We are looking at Scripture together and we are trying to hear what it is you are saying to us through these words of wisdom. Help us to find the wise life, the righteous life, in any study that we do, be it a particular portion of the Bible or looking at the Bible as a whole. We thank you for this group and we pray, of course, for our dear friends Bill and Sue. Be with them as they make their journey northward this week. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Okey-dokey. So, last week, we had a lot of videos. In case you weren't here, we had three different videos. This week, we're back to our normal pattern. And, of course, this week, it's working. I'm trying to keep it up there so that it doesn't go down and we have a problem this week. So, anyway. We looked at character, plot, and context, I believe it was, or the particular story, timeline, things like that, places where the action happens. This week, we are looking at design patterns in biblical narrative. And the truth is, you could do a 10-week study on this particular topic. It's one that I think we miss, again, because of the way we normally approach the Bible. The way we normally approach our Bible reading is to do it in spits and spurts and little stories that we're familiar with. The truth be told, yesterday's passage that I preached on has a place in Luke. There is a pattern and it falls right exactly where it ought to. But if I spend my entire sermon time talking about how that works, I don't have time to get to the other. And so, we're used to taking bits and pieces of the Bible. But for the best of understanding, it's always better to take it as a whole. I can't remember if it was last week we talked about this or earlier in our study. But the truth is, the Bible is one book with many chapters, not a library. And when we think of it as a library, you know, you can take a book out of a library and read it 10 times and then not touch the other 65. And you don't want to do that because there are all sorts of books. But you know better than to pick up a book with 66 chapters and just try and read one of them to get the whole story. So, it is one book with many different chapters. It also has many different ways of presenting this. And right now, we are on narrative. We've already looked at poetry. Our last session, again, will be about the other 24%. And y'all may feel like you've been on a whirlwind that day. I'm telling you, the last session we had, you need to become prepared to possibly stay a little longer than normal. Okay. So, as we look at the patterns in the Bible today, what I asked you to do was look at Genesis. And we're going to look at those passages that I asked you to look through a couple of times, not just the ones. But the first time I want to do it is to set the stage for what it is we're talking about today. When you look at examples of ways that biblical authors establish patterns through key words, juxtapose scenes, intellectual references, and more, you begin to understand that the patterns themselves are part of the storytelling, are part of the information passing. It's not just that it works better for the writer that way. They're trying to make a point. Now, one of the things we said about poetry that we really ought to say about the narrative as well is, it is sparse. As we, I think when we were talking about characters last week is where it really came up. Biblical authors don't tell us much about characters, almost never describe them, and don't tell us what they're thinking, just what they did. Out of what they did, we're supposed to figure out what they were thinking. But on the other hand, if something is said about a particular character in the Bible, then you really, you need to listen to it because it's important. The same is true with these repetitions. Sometimes, I think, we tend to think, well, they're just repeating themselves because it's easier to do than figuring out a new way to say it. No, they're repeating themselves because they're really trying to hammer home a point. When I was in my homiletics courses in seminary, the professor we had said, "Never strike the pulpit." He said, "Most ministers think when they do that, they're really making a point." And most people subconsciously interpret that as, whatever he's saying, he doesn't really believe.
So, it's not for emphasis.
Yeah, it's almost like a camouflage. And the truth is, the times that, of course, there's all sorts of ways to pan the pulpit without actually touching it. You raise your voice. Or you say things a whole bunch of times. You say things repeatedly. And it is to make a point, draw attention to something. So, repetition of key words. Repetition is one of the most important design features of biblical narrative. Repetition is used to create patterns that guide the reader's focus. It is used to create expectations around where to look for meaning. This is a quote from Martin Buber, a great biblical scholar. Unfortunately, I'm reading a translation to you because Martin Buber was German and he wrote in German. A lead word is a word that repeats significantly in a text or group of texts. And by following these repetitions, one is able to decipher or grasp the meaning of the text. The repetition may not be the same exact word, but of the root word, which intensifies the dynamic action of the repetition. In other words, again, it's in Hebrew. But just like we have root words and you know they're root words because it sounds like the original word, same thing in Hebrew. Same thing in Hebrew. If you imagine the entire text stretched out before you, you can sense waves moving back and forth between key words, matching the rhythm of the text. It is one of the most powerful means of conveying meaning. So, your assignment was Genesis 1 through 4. If you would turn to that and if you would look at Genesis, Chapter 1, verse 31. "God saw that it was good," it repeated six times, leading up to the seventh time in verse 31. "And God saw all that he had made; behold, it was good." Now, we definitely remember that when we are reading the first chapter of Genesis. So, that's a pattern I'm sure you have never missed, especially since there is a certain rhythm to it, even though the sections vary in length. Every section, every day, ends with that pronouncement about it being good. One of the things that we may miss, because we're not reading in the original language, however, is good, and maybe you don't, forgive me if I'm assuming something, I should. In Hebrew, just as in English, good can mean a variety of things. But one of the things it definitely means in Hebrew is, in addition to what we would just say the word "good," is it means whole. And when things are whole, they are right. They're the way they're supposed to be as opposed to, you know, well, the war stopped, but things weren't whole. You know, it was good to have peace, but we knew we had a lot of work to go, that kind of wholeness. So, anyway. But it does not stop there. And we may or may not pick up on the fact that it goes right on into Chapters 2, 3, and 4. So, if you look at Chapter 2, this time, verse 9. "Lord God caused the growth of every tree that was good for eating and the tree of knowledge of good and evil." The original authors, and I also should say editors, because these were, they start out as oral tradition stories being told over and over again. It is only later that somebody puts them in a written form, and even later than that, that these written forms begin to come together. So, as you know, from your having read, just read, 1, 2, 3, 4, Chapter 1 through, what is it? The second verse of Chapter 2 or so is really a complete story. Creation begins and comes to, well, to a conclusion in the sense that the seven days are over. And then Chapter 2 starts with a whole new kind of understanding of how the world was created. Chapter 1 assumes that human beings were last. What does Chapter 2 assume? Human beings were first. Now, you can look at this two ways. Chapter 1 seems to think that human beings are the crown of creation. It's all led up to this. Chapter 2 starts out kind of with the idea that God was lonely. We need a man. And, well, what does the man need now that he's here? And everything follows along.
You know, I noticed in the first, the first chapter, the word "let," "let"
Yes.
over and over again in the first chapter.
Yes. And let me come right back to that. I want to finish my thought. So, Chapter 2 starts, has the understanding, you start with the most important thing, and then you work your way down. Now, that's two different ways of looking at a relationship. But both of us tell us what about God's feeling about human beings? He treasures them. He treasures them. Whether you think, "I'm the most important thing, so I had to be done first," or whether you think, "Everything was prepared so that when I arrived, it was perfect. It was whole. It was good." Okay. One of the things that, tell me again what you said about "let."
That it's all through the first chapter, as God is creating, he says, "Let there be mine."
Again, in these chapters, two different visions of how God works. Chapter 1 has, you would say, God creates through the Word. He speaks, it is, or, I'm sorry, don't mean to be using so much exclusive language. God speaks, and it is, that's. But look at Chapter 2, the dust of the ground, the clay. It's God doing these things with His hand, much more anthropomorphized God, one that, I don't want to say you can identify with the God of Chapter 1. But somehow, the God that is portrayed in Chapter 2 just feels so much more like me, forming things with His hand, blowing the breath of life into that, which is more important even now in our days because sometimes our lives save. Artificial resurrection, that, that.
Yep.
Literally breathing life back into a human being. Okay, now move down to Chapter 12. "The gold of that land was good." Now, you could say, well, that is some word, and that one's a simple word, and so, what's the big deal? But I believe that it's, it is an intentional choice by the original authors and then the editors that followed them to keep using this word to go again and again so that you will get the point about creation. What's the point about creation? It's good. And that word in Hebrew also is almost like saying, what other word?
Order.
Whole. Hebrews love order. That's why in that first chapter, the pre-creation is described as chaotic waters. And God brings order. That is what God is trying to do in your life, bring order out of all the chaos that you throw into it. And when we allow God to bring order to our lives, it gets better. And it makes us feel whole. Yes.
What does this word mean, "bedellum," "bedellium"?
Where are we at?
12. "The gold of that land is good. Bedellium and vermilion are also to be found there."
In this particular version, which is the NIV, it is not the RSV, it says, "The gold of that land is good. Aromatic resin and onyx are also there."
This defines it as the best professional and affordable beauty, travel, and special effects makeup brushes. With that professional touch, it's more makeup brushes from blah, blah, blah. That's, it's a tool, it's a cosmetic brush.
No, and it should always be remembered that, and this was true, really, until just the last few years, deodorant had not been invented. And there were smells. And that is why an aromatic essence or perfume or these things were very much appreciated because they smelled sweet or fruit-like or flower-like. We all know that's a much more pleasant smell than the other.
They use candles.
Verse 18. "Then the Lord God said, 'It is not good for the human to be alone.'" Well, now, that sounds like the opposite, but the point is, when human beings are alone, they are not whole. Okay, you're getting the pattern here. Verse 5 of Chapter 3. He's talking, he's telling them not to eat of that tree. He says, "You will be like God, knowing good and evil." But again, the good part. Then, verse 6, "When the woman saw that the tree was good for eating." Now, this verse is always, I've always found it interesting because it reminds me of one of the opening things in the movie Ghostbusters where Dan Aykroyd goes, "Listen, do you smell that?" How do you look at something and know it's good for eating?
I know.
Apples are really pleasant to look at. Some of them are just downright beautiful. But I don't know that you look at anything food-wise and immediately go, "That would be good for eating," because that leaves us with the problem of, who was the guy that first looked at lobster and said, "I believe there's something that I would want there."
Do you not think it was because it was forbidden to touch and eat?
Could be. That's a possibility.
You can know that you're, you're children now, you tell them, "We can't do this." And that makes them want to be more.
They want that much more.
This version, I'm not sure what it is, I'm just in a Bible somewhere. "And when the woman saw that the tree was good for food and that it was pleasant to the eyes."
Yes.
So, there's two reasons.
Yes.
For her to go reach after it.
It's no doubt meant to remind us it was a combination of all these things.
But how many times have you seen a beautiful apple?
We have.
And when you ate it, it was so sour, you couldn't eat it, or it was so, I mean, you know.
I think it is to remind us that we're going to see plenty of things in life.
Well, it is.
That we think we want. And we have to be careful and bring together all of our knowledge because somewhere along the way, some of these things we don't need to partake of, we've been told not to partake of. But our eye is leading us ever down that path. And it really roots in that idea that, oh, I know it's better for me than you do. You know, what do you know, just because you might be older than me or wiser than me or more well-educated than me or know which plants are poison, you know. Ivy and sumac don't look particularly dangerous.
No, but.
But, yeah, yeah. You know, oleander tea probably brews up nicely, but, but it'll kill you. It will kill you.
Maybe it was a perverted character that wanted to eat lobsters.
And now I can't eat any of that stuff.
Really?
Or I will be infamy. And I love it. I love it. I'm just trying to even stay out of seafood restaurants because temptation is right.
Can I say something about the odor? My sister, one of my sisters is three years older than I. My mother looked at her and she said, "Joy," that's her name, "Joy, you have bedellum." And I said, "Can I have some?"
You didn't have a knowledge of good and evil at that point.
Well, it had to be good if she had something and I didn't.
Well, there you go. And it even goes into Chapter 4, look at the seventh verse. "If you do good, you'll be accepted. But if you don't do good, sin is crouching at the door and its desire is for you." That, of course, is part of God's conversation with Cain, who is already contemplating, sins are not to be gradated, but one of the most awful things you can ever do. So, this gives us a taste of this repetition to drive home points and make us understand the full nature of what you're going to, you want someone to understand. And I can't remember who it was I was talking to recently here upstairs during, or right after church, said something about repeating an element of something in my sermon. I said, "When we were in our homiletics courses, they used to say you have to say things a dozen times before people really hear them."
Like wives and husbands, I guess.
Could be, could be. I get you. And looky here, good, it's good, it's good, it's good, it's whole, it's right, it's what, it's the way things should be. But unfortunately, it's not the way things stay. Okay, so let me.
That's a good tip for my son.
Well, there you go. I'm going to stop this so that we can see our video.
We've been exploring how biblical narratives work. And it turns out, stories in the Bible are like any other story. You've got to pay attention to the characters, the setting, and the plot.
Yeah, these are the basic tools an author uses to help readers see the meaning and significance of the events. Now, it's time to learn one final skill that will bring all these elements together, how to detect design patterns in biblical narrative.
What do you mean by design patterns?
Well, the biblical authors have shaped all these elements, character, setting, and plot, to create a series of repeated patterns that weave through story after story and tie them all together. When you notice these patterns, you'll see how different stories across the whole Bible have been coordinated to emphasize key themes.
This sounds interesting, but how do you know how to find a biblical pattern?
Well, biblical authors do it subtly. The best way to catch on is to watch them embed key words and images that link stories together. Take, for example, one of the main themes of the Bible, the complex and tragic human condition.
Okay.
So, let's start at the beginning, where God is making a really good world.
Right, seven times it says, "God saw that it was good."
So, those are clearly important words. Now, watch. God appoints two characters named human and life to rule this world on his behalf, and they're told that everything is good for them to eat.
Except for the tree of knowing good and evil.
So, then the humans doubt God. And in Genesis, we read, "They see that it's good to take this knowledge for themselves." Then we read, "They desire to become wise." And then finally, "They take what they want."
And everything falls apart. This story is about the human condition.
And on its own, it's a really powerful story, but the biblical authors don't leave it there. They turn it into a pattern. It happens again with Abraham and Sarah. God brings them into the promised land, promises them a child. But they don't trust God, they get impatient, and we read the same words. "They see their Egyptian slave. They take her and do what is good in their eyes." Do you get it?
Yeah, the stories match.
Then you get to Aaron at Mount Sinai, and we read how he sees and then takes the gold of the Israelites to make the golden calf. Or there's the story about Achan, who sees the gold of the Canaanites. He desires it and takes it for himself.
This pattern highlights how one person's temptation can create suffering for many people.
Exactly. It's just like the story of Saul, where we read that the Israelites see him. They desire him and take him as their king so they can be like all the other nations.
And Saul's reign leads them to destruction.
Or there's the story of David, which says that he sees Bathsheba. He desires her and then takes her and then kills her husband.
And then David's family starts destroying each other.
So, you see, it's just one basic theme repeated over and over. These stories are all designed to show the temptation pattern.
Which is kind of a downer.
But the repetition builds up anticipation. Perhaps someone will come and break the pattern. This is why the stories of Jesus have been designed to carry the patterns forward to their climax.
Really?
Yeah. Like, what does Jesus say when he's faced with his greatest temptation to avoid dying on the cross?
Not my desire, but your desire be done.
So, the pattern flips, and you have one person resisting temptation, and his suffering provides life for many.
Very cool. Can we do one more?
Totally. How about a big one? How God brings humanity through chaotic waters into a new world. It starts on page 1, where God separates these dark, chaotic waters.
Yeah, dry land emerges as a home for humans to flourish.
Then the pattern reappears with the chaotic waters of the flood. God rescues this remnant, Noah and his family, through the waters so that they can step onto dry land and become humanity 2.0. Now, does that basic storyline remind you of anything else?
Oh, right, the famous Exodus story.
Exactly. That's when God saves his chosen people from Egypt by leading them through the waters onto dry land.
While Pharaoh and his army is destroyed.
The pattern repeats later with Joshua and the Israelites.
They pass through the waters of the Jordan into the promised land.
Yeah, you got it. So, now you can see how later biblical authors will project this pattern into the future. Like Isaiah, he hoped for a new Exodus with a new king, leading God's people forward into a new creation. And in this repetition, the nations become the chaotic waters.
Ah, so you can see how combining all of these patterns brings us to Jesus.
Yeah, notice how all the Gospels highlight that story of Jesus going to the Jordan River. He goes into the waters and back out again.
His baptism.
That's when God announces that Jesus is his son, who will rescue the world from the chaos of our evil and violence by going into death and out the other side. This is why baptism became such a big deal for Jesus' followers. It's about participating in this ancient pattern, going through the waters of death, following Jesus into the new creation.
These design patterns seem really important.
Yeah, they're actually the main way biblical authors have unified these hundreds of stories together. And every pattern develops a core theme throughout the whole biblical story that leads to Jesus.
Great. That's biblical narrative, which makes up over 40% of the Bible. Now, another 30% is made up of ancient poetry.
And learning to read biblical poetry is what we'll explore in the next videos.
I don't understand why they put a pear up there instead of an apple.
Well, there's debate about what's what, but the main point is, or I shouldn't say the main point, but the larger point, I think, is the pattern that they're pulling out there. They saw it, they want it, they fall. Which is why it's funny when people talk about the fall of humankind and want to put this there. And the fall of humankind happens every day. And sometimes it's in my life, and sometimes it's in your life. But it's the, it's the same story over and over and over. But it's, it's the, it's the same story over and over and over. And the seeking to become whole also is the, is the constant, the vision, it is the constant goal. And what I find interesting, when I saw that for the first time, was that this pattern that he's pointing out doesn't stop at the end of the Old Testament. It continues right on, and it is this human pattern. I'm reluctant to say human nature, because I think sometimes when we say those words, we don't really mean what we're saying. I think human nature is to be more whole. And what we are doing is not human nature. It is something else. But one thing humans do constantly is make bad decisions. As they pointed out, the same pattern can reside in the New, the same use of repetition and patterns can be seen in the New Testament as well. The example that they gave in the study material was to point out Luke's use of the word "son of God" in the third and fourth chapters of his gospel. This is chapter three, verses 21 and 22. Not the whole of each, but a portion. At Jesus' baptism, he is declared to be God's beloved son. Then, just a few verses later, it says, Jesus' genealogy is linked back to Adam, who is called, Adam, who is called the son of God. And obviously, with the way Jewish people looked at their predecessors, the idea is that these traits, the trait that is true of the progenitor is true of all the line that follows. Okay. Chapter four, in the temptation stories, they say, "Jesus is tested in the wilderness by Satan who questions Jesus' identity as the son of God." And then immediately following that, he goes into his hometown. And there also is a question of, you know, who does this guy think he is? And they, the exact quote they pointed out was, "Whose son is this?" Well, they were saying, well, it's Joseph and Mary's, or probably more, no matter what it says. Always remember that Luke is partial to Mary and Matthew is partial to Joseph. And it plays out again and again in their gospels. Down to the point of when they trace genealogies, they trace Jesus, Matthew traces Jesus. Jesus, having a problem with my words today. Jesus' genealogy through Joseph. And Luke traces it through Mary. And then finally, in the, at the end of the fourth chapter, when Jesus is confronting a demon, it's the demon that says, "You are the son of God," because he recognizes. So you see that these patterns, and I'll be the first one to admit it, sometimes they don't seem to leap off the page at us. But part of that is because, I don't blame it on anything, part of it is because when you read the Bible in segments, you may only hear stated that one time. To get that out of Luke, you gotta read fully, chapter three and four. And a lot of times we don't do that, because the preacher got up there and he read the temptation story. And then the next Sunday, because he was following the lectionary, he read the story of Jesus going into his hometown. And then at some later time, he told the story about the demon. Well, you know, I can't expect you to take three sermons and put it together if I don't do it also. But this, this, for lack of a better understanding, this is just not the way they do it. Now, maybe Alexander Campbell had the right idea. He thought a good sermon length was somewhere between two and a half to three hours. Also, and this, you know, one of the debates in the Christian church, disciples of Christ, has always been, when do you do communion? Do you do it in the middle of the service, as some churches do, or do you do it at the end of the service? You know what Campbell said? He said, "Always do communion at the end of the service, because that way people won't leave after it's over with and not hear the sermon."
Good.
Well, I don't know if it's good or bad. I've been to churches that did it either way. It always seems to work. So, anyway, all right. I thought some of, okay. This is a quote from Robert Alter, out of the book, "The Art of Biblical Narrative." One of the most imposing barriers that stands between modern readers and the imaginative subtlety of the biblical authors is the prominence of repetition. We are accustomed to stories in which repetition is far less obvious, and so it is probably this feature. So this is probably the feature of biblical narrative that looks most primitive to the modern eye. In order to appreciate the artfulness of this kind of repetition, a modern reader has to cultivate a new, even opposite set of application, expectations, that what they bring to literary works. Modern stories usually attempt to mimic reality by giving us large amounts of information, a lot of which may not be crucial to the plot. If you've ever read a James Michener novel, you know what we're talking about. So that one is expected to detect the repetition of key themes and words among lots of other background noise. Biblical narrative is the opposite. Here, we are confronted with an extremely spare narrative with a high degree of repetition and similarity. And what we are expected to notice is the small but revealing differences among the sea of similarities. This is how new meanings emerge in the pattern of expectations created by explicit repetition. So, I know, as you read through different biblical stories, and you start especially the Old Testament. The Old Testament does this certainly more than the New Testament. You'll have been told a story, and then three verses later, it's being repeated, because the first time you were told what was gonna happen, and then you were told what did happen. And sometimes they go so far as to, after the fact, tell you what was reported that happened. But every one of those is significant. And don't let your eagerness to move along get you to miss those. And it's easy. The, no one likes reading the genealogies, but they are important. Save them for a day when you're starving or something to do. They are telling a story. And back, back just a minute ago, we were talking about the genealogies of Jesus. You can read whole books that are dedicated to that, talking about who's mentioned, how's it divided up? Why, in this instance, were three women mentioned, when, you know, women seem to be so unimportant in the minds of the biblical readers? And if they are mentioned, you dead gum better pay attention, because there's something being said that's truly important there. Repeated theme words can unite a whole string of stories, but this kind of unifying technique can work in different ways. Sometimes entire stories or scenes are designed to repeat elements of other stories. This involves not only repeated words, but parallel narrative themes and sequences. And you saw how they traced that out in the video, and were basically telling you that that particular pattern of the temptation of Adam and Eve is repeated not there, but through the entire Bible. And you think of it as, you know, a climax like that, as opposed to the way we usually think of stories being climatic. Till we get to Christ, who is able to resist those temptations and do the will of God. Now, there are stories of temptation after that event. The opportunity for change is presented through Jesus. It doesn't mean that people took it. And it's still the same way. We find that still the same way. People will do what they know they're not allowed to do, but it seemed like the right thing to do at that time. Okay, back to Adam and Eve for a moment. This time, we're past chapter one, now we're gonna look at chapters two, three, and four. So, in chapter two, verse sixteen and seventeen, the human is given a significant choice for an unstated reason. It says, "From any tree of the garden you may eat, but from the tree of good, knowing good and evil, you should not eat, because the day you eat from it, you will surely die." We always forget the last portion of that sentence, and somehow think what he meant was you'll surely be punished. It says, "die."
It does.
And there, and, and don't think, well, mistranslation, or or, do that.
He changed his mind?
Oh, yes.
He loved Adam and Eve?
Oh, yes. So, but that was the statement. Now, if you look at chapter four, we're on to a two different, a whole new situation and two different characters. This is chapter four, verse six. "Why are you angry, and why has your face fallen? Isn't it the case that if you do good, you will be lifted up?" Why was Cain angry? Remember? Hmm? Of Abel, because
God loved him more.
He loved his sacrifice more. And of course, Cain was a farmer, and Abel was a shepherd. And so, they offered of their first fruits, meaning Cain offered grain or some type of fruitage, and Abel offered a living sacrifice. Now, here's the funny thing about all that, and I'll try not to stay on this, but just for a moment. But sometimes when I'm itching my hand, what it really means is my brain is itching.
Oh, you're not telling the truth, or it's
No, no. How Jewish were Cain and Abel?
How Jewish were they?
Thank you. They were not, at all. Abraham's way down the line from here. So, part of the point here is to say, you know, well, God always liked sacrifices. That was not something invented by
I'm confused. Say that again. They were not Jewish?
That's correct.
And what?
Abraham is the one that is called to be separate and apart, the chosen people. He is, he is not born, he comes much later.
Right, right.
But the Jew
So, who are these people? These are not the ancestors of the Jewish people?
They're the predecessors of the Jewish people.
Well, that's what I meant.
They are the predecessors of the Jewish people, but they're not Jewish, but they're doing something very Jewish, which is the sacrifice system. Not that other peoples didn't sacrifice, all sorts of people sacrificed. But it's important, I'll just say it like this, it's important to me that we always remember they were not Jewish, they were not anybody, really, they were just human beings. We're at the stage of creation, chapters one through eleven, where God is dealing with all of humankind. This was the way everyone was supposed to be. I do not believe God rejected Cain's sacrifice. I believe he just liked Abel's more. We can't know exactly why. And why? Because the author didn't tell us. We can draw all sorts of conclusions. Well, one was an animal, the other was grain. Or God just liked Cain better. Or Cain had, excuse me, Abel better. Or Abel just had a better spirit about his sacrifice. I don't know. There are, there are slight indicators. In the Hebrew, and I don't know if it's translated out here or not, but in the Hebrew, the indication is Cain went and got fruit. Some, some fruit, it was probably really good fruit, or grain, or whatever. But Abel took a firstborn. Because that's the word that's used, it's not just an animal, it's firstborn. And this will lead to this idea of what God really, what is best, what is the most whole, is the first fruits. Now, if you sacrifice the first land that's born, there are no guarantees that any more lands are gonna be born, for sure. And same way with first fruits out of the field. If you take the first grain off the stalk and sacrifice lord, tomorrow a flood could come and wipe out the rest of the grain. But you have prioritized your feelings. Now, does that make sense? But we can't be sure that's, you know, that's exactly what happened.
But you're right, it's more specific when they
Yes. Cain was mad at his brother. Now, here's the real truth, Cain was mad at God. But you know, you can't be mad at God. Even the most unholy of people know that, because you're messing with fire there. But you can be mad at your brother. And you can take anger out on your brother. All right. So, then, the human is tempted by an animal. In chapter three, verse one, we're told it's a snake that was craftier than any other creature. In chapter six, again, this time here's an animal, but it's metaphoric. And he says, "If you don't do good, sin is crouching at the door and its desire is for you." Now, the author is anthropomorphizing sin. We don't usually think of sin as something, what crouches at the door? You know? A wild animal that might be getting ready to attack you? But you don't, you don't normally think of sin in an anthropomorphized way. That's intentional. You're gonna give in to these animalistic desires. So, then they point out, the human gives in to that temptation with destructive consequences. The woman takes a fruit from the tree and offers it to the man who does not fight not to eat it. And likewise, in chapter four, Cain is very angry. He spoke to Abel's brother while they were in a field, rose up against Abel's brother and murdered him. Then God comes asking the question. And see, when we deal sermonically or even study-wise with chapters two and three separately from chapter four, we may not see how much they have in common. Chapter three, verse nine, God calls out the human beings and says, "Where are you?" And God said to the woman in verse twelve, "What have you done?" And in chapter four, verse nine, God said to Cain, "Where is your brother Abel?" And then in the tenth verse says, "What have you done?" It's almost like an echo down, right down to some of the way, the words. And when they come out translated the same, there's no guarantee that they're exactly the same. But in this case, they are. The human dodges the question. Chapter three, verse twelve, "The woman who you sat with me, she gave me, and I ate." And Abel's response And Abel's response, excuse me, Cain's response is to say, "I don't know. Am I my brother's keeper?"
That's used a whole lot in this world now.
Yes.
Those are scriptures.
Yes, and the interesting thing is, as we look at the Bible, especially for me, when we look at the New Testament, it turns out, "Am I my brother's keeper?" And the answer is, yes. Yes. "The perpetrator is cursed." God said to the serpent, "You are cursed from every beast and from every creature in the field. Cursed is the ground because of you." And chapter four, verse eleven, God says to Cain, "You are cursed from the ground." And of course, both are given lives that are made much more difficult than they were originally meant to be. I mean, let's face it, a garden, where everything you need is right there, opposed to from the ground, you will kill the ground, and from your labor is how you will eat. Now, you give that choice to anybody in Vanco County who's involved in agriculture, I think they'll likely take the garden because they've had plenty of times when the ground proved unwilling. Working the ground will now be more difficult. Well, we've just been through that. "The human is banished from the divine presence." Now, interestingly enough, that may not be the way that we feel about it, but it is the way it is stated. Chapter three, verse twenty-four, "And God banished the humans, and he camped east of the garden of Eden." When they left the garden, there was a division between God and human beings at that point. Just one chapter later, "Behold, you have banished me..." This is again Cain's being. "You have banished me from the face of the ground and from your presence." And Cain settled in the land of Nod, east of Eden. And this feeling that there is separation and this feeling continues throughout human history. And it is only overcome through the grace of God, the love and obedience of Jesus Christ, and the indwelling of the Spirit of God in us through the Holy Spirit. So, we're gonna stop there. Any questions about narrative, repetition, this idea of not just words, but whole events, whole patterns of the way things happen, being repeated again and again in the Bible? They're not exactly the same. And so all the times, we don't see the sameness. But I love the way they show that pattern.
Can I add a couple of anecdotes? These are not biblical, but perhaps... I mean, this is probably unsurprisingly, in a certain sense, universal repetition, this sort of thing, through multiple cultures. And I'd like to share two. One is that if you play basketball on a playground, there's a repetition, you know? First, you have to tell them you're going to beat them. This is the way it says, "I'm gonna clean your clock." They have other ways to say that. And then while you're doing it, you have to continue the trash talk and keep telling them what you're doing to them, which you... And then after you finish, you've accomplished that, you tell them again, "See, I cleaned your clock, just like I said I was going to do." The other example is from the Navajo Native American tribe. They have a thing called the night chant, which is a healing ceremony. And you want repetition. Man, you know, this goes a long time. It's repeated and repeated and repeated and repeated. And the students I had really got tired of it, maybe like genealogies. But it seems like there's something universal about this pattern. And there it is right there, too. I mean, initially.
Think about the New Testament, and particularly in this case, Gospel John. Jesus reports to Peter that he's going to betray him. Then we have the scene at the high priest's house, where Peter does deny knowing him. And then on the beach later, in that twenty-first chapter, this acknowledgement that, "That's exactly what you did. You did what I said you were going to do." And you can't pick up on that unless you read all three stories. And you can't read all three stories probably in... Certainly in one worship service because we'd be reading Scripture the whole service long to get all those chapters in. But there are times when I think, you know what? We'd have been much better off reading this whole portion of this gospel than what I had to say. One of the most wonderful experiences I ever had. I went off on a weekend retreat. And it... Most of the weekend was supposed to be spent silent. But we would have, rather than having dinner conversation, we would take turns reading the book of Mark. And in the course of the meals that we had during this weekend retreat, we read the entire book of Mark. You know, which is not hard because it's sixteen chapters. But I thought to myself when I came home, I am so much more uplifted and enlightened than just simply sharing, you know, "Well, I was out on a hiking trail and I ran into a snake. Boy, was I scared," and all that. So, one book, many chapters, many styles. Next week, I don't have the assignment for you, I'm sorry, but I'm getting better. Next week, we will be looking specifically at the narrative about and by Jesus. When I say "by," I mean the parables. So we're gonna look at... And that'll be our last session on narrative. The narrative by and about Jesus. And we'll have the assignment in the bulletin, the specific assignment in the bulletin. But anyway, let's close with a word of prayer. "Gracious God, we thank you for these words, for they open our minds and our hearts and make us ready to hear your voice. Continue to intrigue and enlighten us through these words of Scripture. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen."
Thank you.
You're welcome.